After six o'clock, I'd like to call the city council meeting to order. If you all could please stand for a moment of silence. Thank you. If you could turn face the flag for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You all may be seated. Clerk, can you do the roll call of the council members, please?
Lehman?
Here.
Hodak?
Here.
Cassidy?
Here.
Baker?
Here.
Hall?
Here.
Mendoza?
Here.
Lake?
Here.
We are all here. Moving into the minutes of the previous meeting, they were electronic this time, but we still need someone to make a motion to pass them.
I believe we have the April 2nd and 16th written minutes to approve yet. Is that correct?
Do we have Aprils to approve?
I thought all of them were approved last time.
Were they?
We approved all of them last time.
Didn't we just get them in the email? Okay. So I stand corrected.
The minutes. So again, the written synopsis that you have for the May 7th meeting is just that, it's a synopsis. You would be approving the video minutes or the video as minutes.
I'll move to approve the video minutes.
I second.
All right, we have a motion by Mendoza, a second by Baker for the approval of the video minutes. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Hodak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
That carries. Any communications?
I have none.
Uh, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Pursuant to the minutes, I have a change to request.
Okay.
Of the April 2nd minutes, I made a motion to approve those minutes
Okay.
at the last meeting. And I goofed
Okay.
the item C pursuant to the law director. It reads Stephanie Kaiser passed out to everyone the annual report of the state of Minnesota Foster rehabilitation municipal court for 2023. And what it should have read is Stephanie Kaiser passed out to everyone the annual report from the Tiffin Fostoria Municipal Court for 2023. And I would like to submit that change.
Okay.
I would like to apologize for the error.
An okay motion to do. All right, so we have a motion to amend the April 2nd minutes as stated. Do we have a second to?
I'll second it.
All right, so we do have a motion by Cassidy, a second by Baker to amend the April 2nd minutes. You have that change written. Okay. So clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Hodak?
Yes.
All right, April 2nd's minutes are amended. Moving into report of committees. Yes, sir. Gotcha.
Yeah, we should probably do a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Yeah, you're correct. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the April 2nd minutes?
Yes.
As amended? So that motion is by Cassidy?
I'll second.
Seconded by Lehman. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Hodak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
The April 2nd minutes have been re-adopted as amended this evening. Good. Move into report of committees, the finance committee.
Uh, the finance committee met this evening at 5:30. The finance director updated the committee on the April financials. He noted that the water and sewer revenue is not running on target with predictions, and they are looking for the source of that variance. He explained the legislation that will be on the agenda for tonight's council meeting. And then he provided an update on the airport terminal. Our next meeting will be June 18th at 5:30 in council chambers.
Thank you. Public affairs committee?
The Fostoria American Legion Post 73 is presenting a Memorial Day service at Fountain Cemetery this Monday, May 27th at 10 o'clock, 10 a.m. Everyone is welcomed and encouraged to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. The law and ordinance committee?
The law and ordinance committee met this evening. As a final reminder, the first item under old business concerning amending the traffic control map should be left unmoved. Councilperson Lehman will be reaching out to the compliance officer to discuss the possibility of tracking outcomes regarding the new landlord-tenant rights ordinance. Deb Tyson raised continued concerns regarding one-way parking and all resource recycling. The law and ordinance committee will meet again Tuesday, I believe is it June 18th?
Thanks.
June 18th at 5:15 here in council chambers.
Thank you. Report of the officers, Mr. Mayor.
Under old business, the first two agenda items appear to be identical. I think to clean that up, it would behoove us to do the third reading on the first one and then vote it down. And then for the second one, pass that one, which is the shortened version, which is the stop signs. I have a copy of the original one if anybody needs it. The the mobile food units ordinance has a minor change in it, so an amendment will be required for that ordinance that I would ask for. Under new business, you'll recall that we canceled our contract with NOPEC for electrical services a year or so ago. We are asking that you now give us permission to cancel the gas contract. This legislation can go three readings. We will then give notice to NOPEC as required by their contract, which will expire on June 1st of 2025. This will give us time to determine what we want to do going forward. I would ask that the last agenda item on the first page be declared as an emergency as we need to respond to ODOT and sign an agreement to get this paving completed. And I can explain that paving if anybody has questions. Under miscellaneous business, I will be asking for appointments to the airport commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Director of public service and safety?
Thank you, Mr. President. You'll see also in the packet tonight is proposal for a new fishing agreement between ODNR and City of Fostoria. In that packet is information from the one that was passed 10 years ago, which expired in April. And what they're asking for, if you'll look at what in the fishing agreement is a 16-year agreement with the City of Fostoria. I think in that packet was some information about how many fish they stocked in in each of those reservoirs over the last 10 years, each of the last 10 years. And so I know that it is already expired, so we'll leave it up to you if you want to pass it as an emergency or if you want to give it a couple readings. But but it did expire in in April, I think. Is it? Yeah, and we just received, yeah, we just received information from it just just this spring. But and they, if you look in the contract, then they they provide some of the some of the the enforcement of the fishing laws and that kind of thing around the two reservoirs in exchange for stocking the reservoirs as well. Leaving it at that. And then in in conjunction with with the Memorial Day ceremony on Monday, today was the day that the veterans, the United Veterans of Fostoria, go out and put the flags on the graves of the fallen veterans. And today was a little special because Mrs. DeBoli had reached out to the folks at the veterans and asked if they could have their second graders come and help put the flags out. So all of the second graders at Foster Elementary School came today and helped put flags on the veterans' graves and learned a little bit about the importance of why we have Memorial Day and why it's important to put the flags on the graves of those who serve the country. It was a it was a pretty neat experience to be out there when that happened this morning. And that's all I have for now unless you have any questions.
Thank you. Director of law?
Thank you. Just to follow up on a couple things, I handed out the packets of the replacement pages. I do not have notebooks for you all. You can make your own notebooks. But those are all the replacement pages, so the paper, you should have the paper updated through January 1st of this year. The online is also updated. And along with that, I would ask that if you're so inclined to pass the last piece of business and new business as an emergency, approving those replacement pages, just because we are so outdated, it would be very good to just get those approved, get them on the books so that we can start enforcing all of those. Also, so I sent out some, like the mayor mentioned, some proposed changes on the mobile food vendors. Our compliance manager had attended a training a week or two ago and met with a number of individuals in the Northwest Ohio area. And we're just kind of trying to be more uniform with the language. What the state of Ohio refers to these things as is mobile food units as opposed to mobile food vendors. So in the proposed revisions that I sent out to you, it had all of the original red lines that we had proposed to change to the old ordinance, and I have just changed the the new proposed changes in blue. So if you guys are in agreement with that, I would just ask for a motion to amend that. And then that can go through another reading, because I think we're on the second reading for that one. So it can it can go through all three. But if you could just amend that tonight, if you if you so choose. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Director of finance?
Just a couple of items. First, on the new business, you have a resolution to appropriate an additional $9,000. That is for the services to update our ordinances. And then there's a number of then and now purchase orders that need to be approved. Both of these resolutions need to be passed on an emergency basis, which is pretty standard with those types of resolutions. I also provided each council member, and I apologize, Mr. President, I don't know that I did for you, a copy of a handout I gave to the finance committee regarding the terminal grant. We will be presenting legislation to you at the next council meeting to increase the amount of money we're transferring from the general fund into, or advancing, not transferring, advancing into the airport grant fund. We originally in our budget had $600,000. We actually have grants totaling $785,000. We advance from the general fund into the grant fund. And then once we build and incur those expenses and pay for them, we'll submit those dollars and get reimbursed. At that point in time, the grant fund will reimburse the general fund. The other part of that, though, is our percentage of match on the terminal is in the original budget that was passed in December was $25,000. We need to actually increase that to $137,950. One of the grants that we have, so we have a 10% match on both grants. The $600,000 grant, ODOT picks up 5%, so we only have a 5% match on that. On the other grant, they were doing that, but beginning in 2024, they dropped their match, so we owe a full 10% match on the grant for the second part of it. And in addition to that, part of our terminal is not grant-eligible, primarily exclusively the manager's office and then the associated boiler room percentage of that office as well. So 9 and 1/2% of our cost of building the terminal is not grant-eligible. We have to fund that ourselves. That's how we get to the $137,000. So you'll be seeing legislation at the next meeting asking for that approval. Wanted to give you the heads up on that prior to us coming back to you, asking for additional dollars and what that's all about.
Thank you.
I have a question. Have we looked at the fee structure for the airport usage-wise in recent years?
Yeah, well, so we're looking at everything that pertains to the airport. Part of the issue is that we have been trying to get the the fuel pumps up and running, and that has been an ongoing issue for the last, you know, since like 2021. It just keeps dragging on until we're able to get fuel out there, then everything really hinges upon getting getting airplanes in and out of there, getting fueled and all those. And those kind of issues, we've looked at, looking, you know, talking about, you know, hangar rentals and all those kind of things. And I know that I think part of part of what we're going to be doing is restructuring of an airport committee, which will help to address more of those things going on, getting the airport committee back up and running.
And the reason I bring that up is is that we've got extra money that we have to put out for it. So somewhere we have to figure out eventually, I know it's a long thing, especially with the fuel and everything, that where that that needs to come in. And the second question, I guess, on the airport and fees would be there there is airplanes taking off and landing there, practice landing, all times of the evening and night. And that's, those lights, I think, are automatically clicked on with their system. We're paying that electric bill, but they're practicing landing on our field.
Our field is one of the preferred fields for the Bowling Green State University Aviation Program, which is probably the top program in Ohio. But you are absolutely correct.
So I guess we're burning electric to help the BGSU students.
Well, if you don't go pilots and you can't have more planes at your airport.
That's right.
And until you get fuel.
And you don't have any rent.
Until you get airport, until you get fuel at the airport, then you can't
Yeah.
you can't you can't capitalize on having them come and teach them how to fuel up, and then we get the fuel revenue. So it all really hinges upon getting this.
Yeah, I don't think that they're causing any damage to the runway doing what they're doing.
So it's good to see pilots still coming in and out of there.
Yeah.
Thank you again.
I have a question as well. Mr. Finance Director, am I correct in understanding the resolution for the permanent appropriations needs to have a motion to amend it prior to most motion to suspend it because of the email we received earlier this afternoon?
Well.
Or did I read that incorrectly?
No. Oh, yes, the agenda will need to be amended because it does, it just, it doesn't talk about an emergency passage on the agenda. I don't know if the agenda needs.
Not the agenda. Oh, so I.
The appropriation that you was in your packet was from May 7th. I gave you the actual appropriation that you're going to be acting on, which is that $9,000 to pay for the.
So we don't need to move them. Thank you.
No.
And then also, Mr. Mayor, a lot of information was thrown at us just now, and I think I missed the last thing that you had instructed us to do for a passing as emergency this evening. I believed you had said the last item, but the last item is concerning the updated pages. So is that what you were referring to, or was there something different?
Yes, that the last item on the.
Last item on the on the first page of the agenda is the emergency leg, I'm asking for an emergency to be declared to so that we can respond to ODOT to get that paving done on Finley Street.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the cabinet? All right, at this time, we will move into the public portion of the meeting. I wanted to give a couple of ground rules. We have three people who have requested time to speak. Those people by city charter are allowed to speak for 10 minutes. I like to keep things a little bit looser and allow for dialogue, but I wanted to make it clear that council has no responsibility to answer questions. Typically, the public is asked to make statements. Questions that you are asking may go unanswered. But if people feel compelled to, I have not stopped people from answering questions in the past. I just want to make sure that we're clear on that as I was brushing up on the charter myself. So I just want to make that clear to the public. It's on video recording also, just so people are aware of that. So there does not have to be a dialogue between council and the people who speak at public. So at this time, I have Deb Tyson as first up on the docket.
Thank you. Deb Tyson, 800 Woodward Avenue, Lot 9. I have a couple things, and I don't need feedback. What I need is to mention these and put it out there since this is going by video. I went to the Loudon Township's trustees meeting on a Wednesday morning after I had already attended that May 8th zoning meeting. And I had somebody that I had told you guys, this B person that goes over at Perry's. He came, even though he's a very busy man, and surprised everyone, including the landfill people. And I have requested him to come to this Tuesday, May 28th at 10, oh, I'm sorry, at 7:00 p.m. Loudon Township Zoning Commission has a proposed zoning, which is my understanding, while the landfill will be grandfathered into anything that currently exists, it would stop them from coming towards Fostoria in the future. So that's at Loudon Township Building 9970, West Township Road 112, 7:00 p.m. Everybody is invited. It is public. I talked to the trustees myself. Also, there was a continuance of that May 8th meeting. It is to June 20th, which is a Thursday. And that is, I believe, at 7:00 p.m. But we should have another meeting before then here at council that I can give an update. The only qualified person that spoke was the person over there at Perry. And I spoke, and one of the zoning commissioner's wife spoke. And we were the only three allowed to speak. Everybody else was not allowed to speak at that meeting. I don't know why. That was weird. But it's continued. They would not make a decision because we had the B person there, and they were able to quote formulas and everything and explain things beyond what my education is. But that's what I wanted to bring to you guys' attention, to invite you publicly to the meetings. I think it's very important that somebody represent Fostoria and hear it for themselves. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Tyson. The next person on the docket and agenda is Renee Vogel-Song.
Renee Vogel-Song, 702 East High Street. It's been a while. It's been a while. So I got some stuff built up because I've been watching the video. Thank you, Zach. If it wouldn't be for that, I wouldn't be able to see it on the days I'm not allowed to be here because of my job. I don't see a line out here anywhere of people saying, hey, I want this volunteer to do this. I know how to do audio and video. I don't see that line. Keep up the good work. There's a lot of us out here that appreciate it. Well, let's get on to the the sauce of everything. Y'all put the renters ordinance in, and I feel that y'all was being a car dealer. Just doing a bait and switch. Let's put it in. I watched the meeting when you guys had it, just to talk about it. And y'all wasn't too keen on it. I think maybe one or two of you was. Rest of you wasn't too keen on what was written in there. Well, we need to change this. We need to change that. We need to change this. So what'd you do the very next meeting? You guys pass it. Oh, we'll change it later. How can you put an ordinance up as it's written as an ordinance with the mindset that that's the ordinance I'm passing, but I'm going to change it on the public later? That's not fair to citizens. That gets that gets us a bad taste for what y'all is doing for us. It makes it look like you're not doing it for us as citizens. You're doing it for y'all, and you're doing it for your own little circles. Just like it was said, no names mentioned. It was said, they're tired of seeing the town trashed up. So we need this ordinance, on renters ordinance. I brought in pictures, a bunch of them. Y'all looked at them. Not one place was a rental property. But those things looked worse than any rental properties you see around here. So how is it this rental thing's going to straighten up the town? You need to take some of that stuff off this rental and put it on straight-out ordinance. You want the trash off the porches? Put it on for everybody. How many of those pictures had trash on the porches? There's a number of them. And that wasn't, that was on the corner living in the houses. So what what good is this ordinance going to do? Already, everything in there was state. The only thing this ordinance is going to do is going to give y'all money. That's what it was about, right? Brings the money into you. So that ain't that ain't cool. The Coharts, they used to be on Spur Street. Y'all said that was, can't straighten that up because it was grandfathered in before the ordinances. That's fine. That property was sold after the ordinances was there. Does the grandfathering stop when a property is transferred? Especially when it's transferred more than once? Seems like a grandfather would go out the window. There ain't no reason why that street, we got to be worried to drive down it, that we're going to get flat tires from metal laying out in it, scrap laying all around, mud all over the place. It it looks bad. So you want to talk about rental properties? Why don't you go to a regular business that's sitting there? If I did that to our street on High Street, better believe there'd be somebody knocking on my door. So that ain't cool. That's, you know, there there has to be something in the law or in the ordinances that can make them put up fence and hide that stuff, keep the rodents out of the way. Keep it so kids can't get in there and get hurt. Same way with the food truck ordinance. Y'all got that out here. I've I listened to the last meeting. Y'all told a couple of the people that was with food trucks that was up here asking, oh, this is what it means. This is what it means. This is what it needs to say. It is not what it says on that paper you guys are looking at. It says almost the opposite in some places. So shouldn't that be straightened up before you pass it? It shouldn't even be on the table. It should have the right wording in it before it's even there for you guys to go for. I mean, that's not helping us as citizens. Another thing, Elm in Perry. I mentioned it quite some time ago about that light, the new light. Okay, we got it. We got a 29-foot camper behind us thinking. It makes a long unit. You get behind a car that don't want to make a right turn because there is not a sign in this town, and I'm sure the chief can admit to that. There's not a sign that says you have to turn right on red. There's signs that say, no, turn on red. So a car sits there, my camper's still out in the intersection because I had a green light. But now I can't go nowhere because they don't want to turn right on red. What's wrong with making that a continuous right turn off Elm onto Perry? And Elm coming west, just make it no left turn. They got, when there's a light screen, they have to go straight. That's that's south's a whole big issue. Big problem solved in a heartbeat. Another thing is, an emergency exists. That's fine if it's needed. A pickleball court, are you kidding me? Do an emergency ordinance for, so the American get. Come on. You know, pickleball is one of the worst sports for anybody, especially the elderly. Why is the cruise ship shutting them down? Cruise ships are shutting them down daily because people's getting hurt. It's one of the most injured sports, private sports that's out there. And you want to put one out here to where you could have a nice basketball court up there for the kids to play? The teenagers get out there. What's wrong with that? There's a basketball hoop up there. The net's all rotted. Tried to bounce a basketball on stone, it don't work. Wouldn't have been more better. Take one of the tennis. Take one of the tennis courts out, put a half-court in there, let the kids come out there and play. If the older people, I, yeah, I'm older too, so don't, I'm not saying anybody in particular. If they want it, the Y has pickleball courts. There's one of the breweries here in town. They got pickleball court they put out. There's places they can go. We don't need to waste our money that could be used on the kids in the parks for a pickleball court. Come on. That's, and how often is that gonna be played? You talk to anybody, uh, uh, Zen, Z, whatever they're called now? You ask them what pickleball is? Oh, they make pickles in the balls now? They ain't gonna know what it is. They have no clue. You know, so, um, just like the garage sale signs, they're going up already on poles, on streets. Y'all don't want to do nothing because I mentioned Bryan, Ohio. And you guys said, well, Bryan canceled it because they couldn't do the order. Well, they wasn't doing it right, maybe. It was a different town. It's a different place. It's here. We got places, three places in town that's got a garage sale every week. A couple of them every week, yeah. They're selling new items. They market as garage sale. Guess what they don't do? They don't pay taxes. They don't charge us sale tax. They don't have a vendor's license because they, they cash only. But they're selling brand-new items. So th- this stuff needs to be stopped here. Almost done here. The buzzer for the front door. If we can have a buzzer and a camera down here at this door for the police station, there's no reason there can't be one up front. And when this rang, the police department, okay, buzzer one or buzzer two? They can see it. Safety concern? Same thing. So why can't we come in that different? It's just, you know, the safety part, I think that's just, uh, blowing smoke out some hours. And I know you guys don't want to do social media for questions, answering concerns, even though this is a social media mainstream time. But I, for a long time, the only place I've seen any council people is at Kroger's. I ran into Mr. Lake at Kroger's. Ran into Mr. Cassidy at Kroger's. We talked a little bit. But that's it. Why, why can't there be somewhere just once a quarter? You set something up out of here at the learning center. Hey, public, here's Saturday afternoon. You want to meet, meet and greet with the council? Let's talk. Let's see. Here, here's administration. Where, you know, come out here and talk to us. Let us know what you think. Because a lot of people don't want to come up here because of what I did, gave my address. I, I can rattle off a handful of people right now that said, we will not come up there because we don't want to be having somebody come to our door because we gave our address here. And now they're gonna be coming checking on us because we complained about something. I mean, they're scared. The citizens shouldn't be running scared in this town. They should respect you guys. But to respect it, you guys got to give us as citizens the respect back and show us you're gonna work for us, not the little circles and not for yourselves, not just what you guys think. Come out and listen to us. Come out and see what the public says. There's a lot being said here. Like I said, I had a lot built up. I hope, I hope some of it sinks in. If it don't, well, I, at least I spoke my piece. And y'all have a good evening.
Thanks, Miss Vogel.
And a good holiday coming up.
Thank you, Ms. Vogel-Song. The final person on our docket agenda for this evening is Jill Philiator.
Good evening. Jill Philiator, four oh two West Culberson Street. I too have been away, and thank goodness there is the video that I could watch and see what was going on. I do have just a couple things that were concerning me, so I'm going to start right off. I noticed that I have a concern in regards to the splash pad, the decisions that were made to have the splash pad, the funding of the donations and how they were put into Vision 2020 when we do not have, they're a nonprofit that did not have to give any accountability to the city of Fostoria. I did reach out to the Director of Law and talk to her about my concerns. And she did tell me that yes, it was information that I could get from Vision 2020. For public record, I had asked for a line item from the start of when the donations happened, names redacted, so I could actually see how much funds were raised. Because I do know that we had the grants and everything else that was put in to the regular funds, but they were doing the donations. But the donations, they didn't tell us how much based on the guesstimation. I was guessing about three hundred thou. So I got a response back from the attorneys for Vision 2020 saying that they were not, that they did not have to give this because, as it says here, to the extent of your request seeks public records, my client does not maintain public's records as defined by Ohio Revision Code one four nine three, well, I'm sorry, one four nine point four three. Your request for records is respectfully declined. Now, I did, um, the representative Renee did reach out to me, and she did give me information though because she knew that my concern was the fact that the money was unaccounted for and was not part of the Park and Rec Board, which at the time was still in place. I see, and that's what's got my dander up a little bit. I see that in 2022, as we all discussed, and Amy So Eloquent told me I had the wrong ordinance, there was an ordinance put in place by this council to reform the com- composition of the board and to get it back activated as quickly as possible for the safety and security and the needs. In 2023, in August, I put a request into then Mayor Keckler asking to be put on that board. And I was told it had to wait until the next mayor came in. To find that we totally disregarded and took out the entire board with the verbiage that says that whereas the city of Fostoria has limited funds to spend on park and rec and continues to be in fiscal emergency, yet somehow during the course of time between 2016 and today's date, a committee was formed, and we have this wonderful splash pad concept with donations and raising that was not done by any board in the city of Fostoria. It was done by an outside entity, unknown, to raise the funds. So we have valid funds. We have funds being raised for the pickleball court, yet there was no board organization on that. That concerns me because who was making the decisions for the municipal pool, which under that ordinance only could be done by the Park and Rec Board at that time, which the composition was changed for? So that is a very big concern for me because obviously, based on this ordinance being saying that, oh, we have to have limited funds, as we all know, there's quite a bit of money now in the park and rec with nobody on the board managing it because there's not a board. There, it's been totally taken away. So who's managing this money? Who's going to take care of it? Are you guys going to have another committee redesigned and done under a different program, a different format? That's fine and dandy, but at the time that this all took place, the pool did not close down till 2017. So there has to have been somebody manning the process. There has to have been somebody manning this process prior to 2017. We've let the park system go downhill. Foundation Park, I know because we talked about this before, is no longer leased by YMCA. It stopped, and I gave you guys that information. In 2020, they had released the lease. I'm going to make sure I spell it right, but it was released by ordinance. It was, it was released. My understanding is there is a memorandum of understanding, but I asked the council clerk if there was anything she had on file, and she can't find anything that says there's a memorandum of understanding. That being said, it now has gone back to the city to take care of the park. Is it being taken care of? If you go down and looked at the equipment, you'll see that the equipment has been vandalized. If we're not going to be, and all that money that the foundation, the Fostoria Greater Community Foundation put into it and all the money that the Y raises to put into it, if we're not going to maintain this property, that's a tragedy. That is a tragedy because we, as the people, have been raising and helping also to raise money. And yet, it's being pushed off. So that is my concern in regards to Park and Rec, in regards to the monies and, and making these decisions. I understand that we, the bid came back, the, the bid that was there came back too low. When we have over one point one two five million in the coffers for this, we really underestimated this, this job. And most planners, when you're planning a job, would have done their due diligence prior. Even you would look at maybe a twenty percent, but a, almost a hundred percent difference from raise five fifty total and we'll be okay to now. One point one two five ain't cutting it, and I know that they added the bathrooms into it. But it is sort of a disappointment with that money. So then I hear that we're talking about raising monies for the, um, city airport. We don't even have a committee anymore, a board for Park and Rec. But we're going to get a committee together for this airport. We're going to have to bring in how many hundreds of thousands more to meet the needs of getting this airport put together? I don't even know if the airport's in even the city limits. Who all is this airport going to benefit? Are we utilizing our citizens' monies properly? When you talk about the amount of revenue you have to put in to match grants or not be able to match grants, when at the same time, you don't have that with the Park and Rec? The stuff that you have promised the people, you know? How many people will actually benefit from the airport? How many people in the city of Fostoria will benefit from having the Park and Recs enhanced and improved? So that was my question for that. The last thing I have to talk about is the, um, issue with the food trucks. The food trucks and what's called, I was listening to the talk, yes, on the, on the media. And I noticed it says that, you know, we'll have the deposits changed and that the people that are hosting these food trucks will be responsible for the $250 deposit, which makes rational sense. But is that going to be across the board? It's not very clear for everybody. I know that if I've asked to close the street down so that I can do that special community event that I do twice a year in the alley, I will have to make sure I have my $250 deposit to them so that, because that's what the new rule will be. The people that close down the streets for their event, be it a musical event, be it a food truck in the, um, in the street, be it a food truck on Main Street, which by the way, according to the current rules, you can't put a food truck on Main Street. I don't know if you've changed that one yet, but when you look at the ordinance, Main Street was not allowed to have food trucks on it. So I don't know if you've adapted it yet or not. But where is the balance? Is some people's going to be called an event, and they're going to have to have the $250 deposit? Is the other nonprofits that are doing it for parades, for farmers' market, they're, they're nonprofits? They're not city entities? Are they going to have the same rules? What is the rules? We do need to get clarification on that. So those are the two items that I wish to discuss today. But like I said, I am a little bit concerned about the Park and Rec situation because there is so much that the city has for Park and Recs that could be totally being improved. But without even having a board to approve it, then we're looking at a select group of individuals who I still haven't figured out how they were able to make the decision-making process back in what appears to be 2016, 2017, when decisions were made without following the ordinance. And the sad part is, is you here as council, though, there's only a few of you here that were here when I was trying to explain the ordinance issue, did not actively, to me, I can say this to me, actively listened to my concerns. Because if you would have actively listened, you would have had to have said, well, yeah, we did approve that we were supposed to have a board. We are making decisions. There was somebody making decisions, not following the ordinance. But then again, there's no penalty for this one. You, if you have too high a grass, you get a fine. If you have something else for an ordinance, you have a fine. But for not following your own board rules, there is no consequence for the council. So they can pretty much, on this issue, you guys can do whatever you want because there is no consequence. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Philiator.
Yes, sir.
I said, thank you, Ms. Philiator.
Oh, thank you.
At this time, we will open it up to other members of the public wishing to speak. We ask that you limit your speaking time to three minutes. All right, seeing none, we'll go into old business.
To amend the, oh, sorry. An ordinance to amend the traffic control map and file for the city of Fostoria, Ohio, and declaring an emergency?
I'll move to turn down this ordinance.
Is there a second to this? This dies as a lack of emotion.
It's gone.
An ordinance to amend the traffic control map and file for the city of Fostoria, Ohio, and declaring an emergency?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion to adopt by Lake, a second by Hall. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
That passes as ordinance number 2024 dash three six.
An ordinance amending section 1127 point zero five of chapter 1127 of the codified ordinances of the city of Fostoria, Ohio, entitled R3 Multiple Resident District.
I'll move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Mendoza, a second by Lake. Is there any discussion? Clerk, would you call the roll?
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
That becomes ordinance number 2024 dash three seven.
An ordinance amending section 1125 point zero one of chapter 1125 of the codified ordinances of the city of Fostoria, Ohio, entitled Building or Accessory Building Regulations.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Lehman, a second by Baker to adopt. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lake?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
That does carry as ordinance number 2024 dash three eight.
An ordinance amending section 745 point zero four and 745 point zero five of chapter 745 of the codified ordinances of the city of Fostoria, Ohio, entitled Mobile Food Units and Peddlers, Solicitors, and Itinerant Merchants, respectively.
That is the second reading of that ordinance.
I'll move to amend.
Second.
I have a point of discussion.
And we do have a motion to amend by Mendoza, a second by Lake. We may discuss. Go for it.
Once again, like I said at the last meeting, here we are fixing an ordinance that we pushed through. It wasn't clear. It wasn't concise, and it wasn't complete. It's very simple. Let's wait to put it out there to us so that we can vote on it the way it should be rather than bring it up later and fix it. I didn't know there was a hurry to do it. I didn't see one.
Not a hurry. We, that's why it's going through all three readings. We presented it at our last meeting because we were trying to clarify that ordinance. As I mentioned in my report, our complaints manager just went to these trainings in the last week. I just spoke to him last week. This is new to me. So we thought we'd get ahead of it, amend it now before it pays off. it passes, as opposed to wait till it passes and then amended. So I apologize, but this information just came about within the last week. If you don't like it, you can certainly vote it down.
Well, I, I totally, I-
That is your job as the legislative body.
Right.
You can change it however you feel like.
I would just like when we get the legislation, that it would be complete. And I understand in this case, great, I'm glad our compliance officer was at the training and that we're updating this one. I guess it comes back. I've still got a little bit of an issue with our landlord tenant thing, the way there were some things that didn't quite get straightened out on that one in the end. But thank you. I'm glad we're fixing it before we vote on it.
Any other discussion? We do have a motion on the table to amend this. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
That motion does carry, and it remains the second reading of that ordinance. We will move into new business.
A resolution adopting and amending ordinance number 2023-66, permanent 2024 appropriations by appropriating from unappropriated funds in the general fund.
Move to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions.
Second.
We have a motion by Lehman, a second by Lake, to suspend a three reading rule on three separate occasions. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Hold on a second. Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
If that becomes resolution number 2024-39. Read the next one.
A resolution approving and ratifying the prior acts of the department heads and Safety Service Director and approving then-and-now certificates for said expenditures and declaring an emergency.
I'll move to suspend the three reading rule on three separate, separate occasions.
Second.
We have a motion by Mendoza, a second by Cassidy, to suspend a three reading rule on three separate occasions. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
That resolution's adopted 2024-40.
That was just a suspend.
Oh, I'm sorry. Retracted. Uh, the motion has been suspended or carried, the suspended three reading rule.
I'll move to adopt.
Second.
Thank you. There is a motion to adopt by Mendoza, a second by Podak. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Thank you again. That does become resolution number 2024-40. An ordinance to authorize, direct, and empower the mayor of director, I'm sorry, let me start again. An ordinance to authorize, direct, and empower the mayor or director of public service and safety to terminate the plan of operation and govern-
Governance.
Sorry, sorry. Of the NOPEC Natural Gas Aggregation Program, and to leave the NOPEC Natural Gas Program and declare an emergency to exist.
That was the first reading of that ordinance.
Did we need that one to be an emergency?
No.
Because of-
We can go three rea- we can go three readings.
An ordinance granting consent to the Director of Transportation of the state of Ohio and authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fosteria, Ohio, herein after referred to as the local public agency, LPA, to enter into contracts with the Director of Transportation necessary to complete described microsurfeit, microsurfacing projects and declaring an emergency to exist.
Move to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions. Second.
We have a motion by Lake, second by Podak, to suspend a three reading rule on three separate occasions. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
That does carry as ordinance number 2024-41.
A resolution to approve a contract between the city of Fosteria, Ohio, and the Ohio Department of Natural Resources relating to renewal of a fishing agreement concerning lakes, Matrim, and Lambertjack, and declaring an emergency to exist.
That is the first reading of that resolution.
Move to suspend a three reading rule on three separate occasions.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
We have a motion by Lake, second by Podak, to suspend a three reading rule on three separate occasions. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
No.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
That does carry. The motion has been approved to suspend a three reading rule.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right. There is a motion by Lake, second by Baker. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lake?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
No.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
If that resolution does pass, it's 2024-42. And the last one.
An ordinance to approve and adopt current replacement pages to the codified ordinances and declaring an emergency to exist.
Move to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions.
Second.
We have a motion by Mendoza, a second by Hall, to suspend a three reading rule on three separate occasions. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Po- Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
The three reading rule has been suspended.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Lehman, a second by Podak, to adopt this ordinance. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
That ordinance does pass as-
Did I say Mendoza? I was talking, I did not. Okay, I'm sorry.
The ordinance does pass, it is ordinance number 2024-43. That concludes new business for this evening. Is there any need to go into executive session? All right, we will go into miscellaneous business. Who would like to kick that off? House of persons, Pat?
In accordance with the Fosteria Codified Ordinances, Chapter 159.01, I'd like to appoint the following individuals to Airport Commission: Neil Valhallas and Scott Wilson, to two-year terms; Corey Bowes, Jared Hawkins, and Brian Heck, to four-year terms. Would also like to appoint Jerry, Larry Strawman, as a member emeritus, in recognition of his many years of contributions to the Airport Commission.
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Cassidy, a second by Podak, to complete the task on that entire list that will be given to the clerk, so she can record it.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
All right, that motion does carry. Does anyone else have miscellaneous? Any more? Okay. I do have a piece that I, as promised from the last meeting, I gave everybody a copy at your seat of a proposed, um, job description. We could do this a couple different ways. We could take it home, look at it. Might not be the most popular way, but amend it, and then ask the law director to write a resolution to adopt it, but then we would be adopting changes to this as we make after we've introduced the legislation, but it could have three full readings. Um, or we can talk about it now and spend whatever time we need to make this ready, so then there is a, a full draft proposal that might not need any changes that goes with the resolution. Or we can have the discussion at the next meeting and then introduce the legislation after that. So it's really what you guys would like to do, but this is, this is what I came up with. I basically, uh, took Willoughby, Ohio's, um, well-written ordinance and deleted some of the functions that our law director does, that the clerk in Willoughby happens to perform, and then, um, tried to reflect the digital aspects of our minutes, um, just for preservation's sake, um, and then also make sure that we are kind of attributing timelines and so on in this job description.
I myself would prefer to take this and digest it before the next meeting.
Okay. Does anybody have an issue if I ask the law director to make a, a resolution that then would attach this version, and then we would change it?
I do.
Probably a second reading. I figured you might. So do you want to wait until we have-
Let's get it right.
Perfect. Um, I wanted to make sure that we did that, because I want to respect what was said this evening and make sure that we're doing what you wish you guys are, the legislators, so-
Well, I could be overruled by everyone, but-
Yeah. Does anyone want to wish to make an amendment to overrule Mr. Podak? I think we're good. Um, so we'll take this with us. Please bring any proposed changes to this draft, and truly any. This is a draft, it's not gonna hurt my feelings if we gut it and do something else. Um, and we'll work on this during our miscellaneous the next meeting, with the hopes of then having a resolution for the second meeting in June. So with that, I will, any other miscellaneous I should ask? With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second? Okay, thank you. Uh, we have a motion by Lake, a second by Mendoza, to adjourn. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lake?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.